Welcome to the Joint Troy City Council and Planning Commission's Special Meeting for February 20th, 2018. I would like to call this meeting to order, but we'll call Mr. Stewart.
Mayor Dean Slater.
Here.
Mayor Proton Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hodderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Commissioner Apoheian.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Edmonds.
Here.
Commissioner Faizan.
Here.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Commissioner Krenn.
Here.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Senzika. Commissioner Tagle.
Here.
And Student Representative Howe.
Here.
Thank you. What a great representation to be here. I know it took pretty much for Beth to put this together. Is Beth here? Thank you to Beth for organizing and getting our calendars together. We have one discussion item this evening. See, one is the Planning, Planning and Development Concepts and Issues. And before we start, I just want, once again, always want to thank the Planning Commission for what you do for the city as volunteers. I've always said that I think the Planning Commission is the most important commission that we have and say, well, thank you for your service and thank you for volunteering to be on this important board. So, thank you for that. And having said that, I think let's get, let's get going and I'm going to turn the meeting over to City Manager Kishnik at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Councilman. This has been a long time coming. We haven't done this in a while. That sends her regards because this was not her easiest journey. But in the spirit of when I watched the Planning Commission meetings a while ago when this was being talked about, I think it was Mr. Hudson who said, you know, "We can't do this in an hour. We need, we need some extra time." So, that's why we've done it on an off night and staff has put together a very good presentation with Primer on Planning and zoning development process that they're going to go over. We're fortunate to have Dick Carlisle from Carlisle Warpman. He comes here once a year. He's one of the best in the business and that's cute. I'm not just saying that. He's one of the best and he's going to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Brian. That's all I'm allowed to come in, Brian. Thank you very much. Appreciate the nice introduction. And I think you all know Ben, Ben Carlisle, and we're closely with Brett and Mark. Thank you again. You know, it's a real pleasure working for this community and I think we're starting close to our 17th or 18th year of actually working with the community. So, a little history growing there. So, really appreciate the opportunity. So, Brian and Mark and Brett have asked me to sort of give a little bit of an introductory presentation and you said you had an hour and a half and I have about an hour and 15 minutes. Now, I am not. So, we're going to just talk, just very briefly about the overview of Planning and zoning authority, the relationship between the master plan and the zoning ordinance, the development process. And I think that's going to be very specific to the city of Troy and implementing the design stairs because I know that's an issue of some concern to our commission and obviously to the city council. You know, we're very fortunate in Michigan now that we have, you know, with a lot of hard work of our Planning Association and the Leadership Commission, our municipal attorneys, and our MTA, and our Michigan Municipal League to be, to have consolidated statutes in both planning and zoning. So, everything that we really do is an authority granted to us by the state through the enabling authority. So, back in 2008, there were three different planning and enabling statutes for cities, villages, townships, and counties as well consolidated into one. We, as planners, said, you know, planning is planning, you know, whether you're a village or a township or a city, you know, the same concepts apply. And the same thing happened with the Michigan zoning and enabling act. We had these disparate statutes. Some went back to 1943, some back even before that. And with also with lack of uniform procedures in all of them. And it really made it difficult for particularly people working across jurisdictional boundaries, you know, developers, property owners who own multiple pieces of property to kind of understand between the various jurisdictions, what was the difference? Why is it different in abilities that it isn't a township versus a city versus a county? And so, we've, we have, you know, one of the best consolidated pieces of legislation. Now, I will have to say that the legislature continues to chip away at local authority over time and that's always something you have to be vigilant about to make sure that some of the amendments that are being passed are not adverse to local rule. And we've seen, you know, a number of circumstances where that's happened. But the statutes are very clear about the roles and responsibilities. It lays out the responsibilities of the decision-making body, whether it's a township board or a city council in your case. It lays out the responsibilities of a planning commission and it lays it out the responsibilities of a zoning board of appeals. And they are, you know, the language I think in the statute is well-written, straightforward, and very clear. And if you need a little light bedtime read sometime, I encourage you to pick up the planning and zoning enablement statutes. You might find them very interesting. But the point of all of this is that language are not and cannot be made in a vacuum because they're, you know, they have to be based on the laws of the state which we pass our zoning ordinance and our master plans based on those. So, what are the division of responsibilities? It's really, it's very similar to all of those of government. You have a decision-making, you have an administrative, stake administrative function, and you have a semi-appellate or a semi-judicial function in the Board of Appeals. Ultimate authority in most cases rests with the city council, according to so, for appointments to planning commissions and boards of appeals, to ordinance adoption, zoning approvals when there are rezoning requests, they ultimately come before you. Obviously budgets and personnel, you are the ones that decide, you know, how much is going to be spent on these particular functions. The statute does permit, and I think this is, that was a great addition, a city council to actually be the adopter of the master plan. And of course, you know that we've always encouraged that here in the city of Troy. And there's other, other important land use policy decisions that ultimately come, you know, to the city council. The Planning Commission is the recommending body. You are the citizen advocates for planning in this community and the citizen experts. And planning commissions are generally composed of diverse geographic and functional backgrounds in terms of interests and are intended to reflect what the broader interests are of the community in terms of the recommending body to the city council. This is why we have planning commissions because they are the body that can review and evaluate things on a non-political, non-partisan basis and give you their best recommendations from, you know, again, the citizen planner's point of view. We have a number of excellent training programs in the state of Michigan that have, the Michigan Citizen Planner Program that many of our planning commissioners go through. I'm really proud to say I see a number of your planning commissioners at our Michigan Planning Association conferences and I know they're there to soak up, you know, a lot of, a lot of the information as well as talk to commissioners from other communities and share experiences. You have a very good planning commission in this community. The Planning Commission is the one that really administers the preparation of the master plan and if the council so chooses, they could be the ultimate adopter of it. They are the ones that recommend ordinance, amendments, make recommendations on rezonings, and are the ones that conduct site plan review and special land, land use review. And in a community like this, that's a pretty, they have a pretty full plate. You know, you have a pretty full plate because you have a lot of development activity that comes before you. And so, having a well-prepared planning commission such as you do is extremely beneficial to a community like this. And then the Board of Appeals, they're the ones that, you know, they're the final authority in most cases before something actually goes on to, to a type of court actually. So, boards of appeals, again, look at variances, look at various appeals of administrative decisions and make certain interpretations of the ordinance. Again, always a very important thing for your zoning board of appeals to be as equally educated about things as your planning commission because decisions of the Board of Appeals can actually change ordinances, you know, in effect without really meaning to do so. And so, the work that they do is very important when you begin to see a continual precedent of appeals being granted or variances being granted, probably a good idea that you take a look at the ordinance, make a determination that it's probably time to change that provision. And then, of course, we have the administrative and support staff, which here in Troy, of course, you've had some longstanding folks here that have a lot of expertise and are recognized in the field for doing so. So, I know that when we give presentations and we have before you, we talk about the master plan, but the master plan really is your policy basis. You know, the enabling statutes talk about the ordinance, zoning ordinance being based on a plan. And Lori will tell you obviously that the courts in some cases have more loosely interpreted some over the time, but as time goes on, the courts have relied more upon decisions made by communities that have a solid, up-to-date master plan. So, that is why we are, you know, we try to very, you know, remind you of the importance of this and are vigilant about keeping it up-to-date. The Michigan Planning and Enabling Statute was changed a number of years ago when it was consolidated into a single statute to require that the master plan be reviewed once every five years. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be changed, but it means that you are, you know, required to review that plan and if it needs to be changed, you know, you need to, you must, you should change it. It has been, I think, a very positive thing for planning in Michigan for that requirement to be there because it, because we've gone into communities that have updated their master plan for 25, 30 years. In fact, Troy was one that had a master plan many years ago before Mark and Brett and that was, was rather dated. Many other communities are in the same boat. It puts you in jeopardy when you really don't keep your master plan up-to-date because you are supposed to be basing many of your decisions based on an up-to-date plan. So, that's why the master plan is, is highly important and it's what really provides the policy basis for zoning ordinance amendments. So, a lot of times, so when we talk later about making certain ordinance amendments or making certain decisions, I mean, it's always good to go back and look at your master plan and say, "Is this consistent with our master plan?" Now, there's no way that you can have a master plan that addresses every possible situation, but that's why we place policy language in the master plan to give you the ability to make an interpretation and say, "Look, is this going in the direction that we want the master plan? The master plan says that we should go." Because you're always going to be faced with things that are unforeseen in terms of development decisions that aren't necessarily conforming to the master plan. So, I like to use the word consistency because that's, you know, that means that you've looked at it in a broader context, you know, this, this fits that context and it's a decision you can go forward with. If it's not, then you probably need to go back and look at your master plan or not make that decision, you know, to approve something of that nature. That's why, again, we can show a consistent policy basis for conformance with the master plan and, you know, the fact that it supports zoning ordinance, you know, always help you defend your decisions if you challenge it. But it is a document that provides you with a vision and guidance. I think we have been, over the last number of years, have done a really good job of keeping it up-to-date and I think it's a very good policy document, but you know, dynamics are such that it always needs to be evaluated and changed if it needs to be. I think I already pretty much said this, but a significant departure from the master plan without legitimate reasons can really undermine, weaken your master plan and thus ultimately your zoning ordinance. And I've said many times, you know, that we need to interpret it because there are gray areas where we don't always know that, you know, we're faced with new circumstances and we have to view it for consistency with our master plan. I have to say that this, it's been, it's been gratifying to work with the city of Troy because you have treated your master plan very seriously. And it is always, it is sometimes difficult when we advise other communities that it's sometimes not given the highest level of importance, but here it has been. And we've been able to also keep the master plan, the zoning ordinance, for the most part can, up-to-date and consistent with the zoning ordinance. And that is, that gives you, I think, quite a leg up when it comes to, you know, implementing and defending your decisions. So, the development approval process in Troy really is a series of steps that lead to an ultimate decision, one or the other. At each, at each level of the developer review process, there's a level of substances added to that process. It always starts at an administrative level. And I know that administrative staff spends a great deal of time in a pre-application basis. And if you've ever gone to any of the one-stop-ready programs, which I know many of you have and you're a one-stop-ready community, you know the reasons why. We do the pre-application because we want the applicant to be informed of, you know, all of the requirements that they are, are going, they're going to be faced with so that there are no slip-ups along the way. That's one of the major reasons. The second major reason is to give the applicant the opportunity to, you know, have their project internally vetted and to, you know, to get feedback and to ask questions about what might make the project more acceptable and it ultimately has to come before a decision-making body. So, there is a fair amount of time that, and most applicants do take advantage of them, sometimes they don't, but you know, it is, it is a process that, you know, not only do we do extensively here, but we recommend extensively everywhere. We actually teach it as part of the one-stop-ready program in Oakland County. But it's tremendously helpful to the applicant to be able to get as much information out on the table at that point in time so that the process, because its time is money to the development community. And the more time they waste in the process because they didn't understand the process or weren't informed of it or perhaps ignored it, is going to cost them time when it goes to the approval process. So, that's why we like to spend plenty of time making sure people understand our ordinance requirements. Following in that, we go into a formal application and that's, that's when it gets into a higher level of expense for the applicant. And that's why we like to, you know, vet it more thoroughly, the pre-application level, so that we can actually share, you know, we can save that applicant some time and expense when they get to this point because they, we don't, you know, it's never good when they have to redo and redo and redo plans. That's, that's a very costly expense. And so, before applications come to the Planning Commission, they are thoroughly vetted by the planning and engineering staff and their consultants, whether it's us, the traffic consultants, or whatever special consultant might be needed in a given situation. They're vetted before going to the Planning Commission so that plans that are sent to the Planning Commission are complete. Nothing wastes the Planning Commission's time more than when plans go before them that are incomplete with missing information. It's a waste of their, their valuable time and it's a waste of the valuable time of the applicant. The Planning Commission involves another level of scrutiny and often with citizen input. This is where frequently we get a lot of the citizens that are interested in a project because they run near the area or whatever, you know, and that input is weighed before a recommendation goes to council, is when a recommendation to council is required. Generally, things come before council where they are discretionary in nature and those would be rezonings, conditional rezonings, and plan unit developments. And these are the things where, that are discretion in the process. So, in these cases, this is where it comes from the Planning Commission with a recommendation to you, members of council, as a recommendation from your planning commission that's already spent considerable amount of time studying this matter themselves, considering the evaluations given to them by staff and other experts, and listening to citizen comments. And so, there's a great deal of information that comes from this stage that comes, you know, to you. So, there's been a lot of homework that's done for you at that point in time. Not to say that you don't do your own homework, but a great deal of time and research is put into a project before it comes to you. As I said, so it's come multiple layers of review. And I will say, and I think both my experience and the experience bears out here, that whenever you have a discretionary decision, particularly because it is discretionary, and secondly because it has to come, become for council, so there's additional steps, these kind of things are always going to take more time than just a straight, you know, a site plan review or special land use approval. By their nature, they're simply going to take more time. So, one of the things that we talked about is how do we try to save time and money for a developer? Not that that is our sole mission. Our, our mission really is to enforce the requirements of the city and enforce the policies that you have adopted as commissioners and as council members. However, you know, we are a one-stop-ready community and we learned, you know, during the downturn that becoming more development-friendly, we could do so without sacrificing quality of this community while still allowing projects to be expedited through the process. But there are times when, you know, there are, there's, there are areas that we know are going to need more time consuming. And so, that's when we try to be very clear about potential points of friction. Very common in a community that's predominantly built out. You are in a perpetual state of change. Things are, you know, you have property that's being repurposed, infill. You have edges between commercial and residential. These are always, you have key intersections. These are always what, you know, we would term as points of potential friction, you know? And these were, these can, these can always, you know, erupt because of public opinion in terms of the kind of, you know, naturally, sort of natural conflicts that can occur in these particular cases. So, following a consistent process can, can help reduce the friction. And that's where, you know, transparency is built into the process, you know, more information, informing the applicant that, you know, these are the kind of things that you need to do to help reduce the points of friction. There might be certain physical changes. It might be some modification of the project, you know, all of these kinds of things. And that's where I know that staff spends a considerable period of time because frankly, we get more and more projects that are in that particular state. But the final point is if certain regulations aren't working, they should be changed, you know? If we know they're not working and you know they're not working, then it's, you know, then in all likelihood, they need to be changed. And we always encourage to, you know, to remain open to that, that possibility. So, I've asked to actually present a couple of key projects, both primarily because they're both in the same area. And they're of relatively complexity, but they're similar. They, they're relatively, relatively complex projects, but they were achieved through the different processes. The DMC Children's Hospital, I think one of the things that's really noteworthy about this is how quickly the first several stages of this were approved. That, the plans were formally submitted on May 8th. Now, there was plenty of discussion before that that was obviously more time consuming. Pre-application meeting, before the formal application submitted in May 20th, 2014. On June 6th, 2014, it received site plan approval, preliminary site plan approval from the Planning Commission. As a result of the amendments that we made to the zoning ordinance when we did the re-write of the ordinance, that, that is the ones, that is the only step where Planning Commission reviews the site plan. So, it's very important that what you give them is complete and thorough and they are comfortable with what they're seeing. And in this case, that is why that project got approved that quickly. Then we go through a whole series of other things that happened after site plan approval was given by its very nature. Engineering plans have to be submitted and approved. We did not, when we rewrote the ordinance, we believed that we should not require all the engineering detail at this point. This is extremely expensive and if a project's not going to be approved, then they've gone to that, that engineering expense. That's why we do engineering approval after that. Then the final site plan approval is a final site plan including the engineering plans that's also done administratively. As you know, building permits are issued, that's an administrative process. The certificate of occupancy is an administrative process. And then the final acceptance and public improvements of a, in this case, they were, they had some temporary that had to be issued, was done administratively. So, really, from start to finish, this was a little bit more than two years for essentially, you know, a healthcare facility that are very complex facilities. Then you have the Stone Chris Assistant Building. Again, a little different kind of institutional in nature project, same thing. Pre-application meeting submitted in 19, 2015. The public hearing was in September before the Planning Commission, came before the city council in December. But again, because of the discretionary nature of it, as I said before, normally takes a little bit more time. But the engineering plans were approved in May, final site plan approval in 2016. Thing is built very quickly in a five-month construction period, which is, you know, amazing. Certificates of occupancy were issued in August 2nd, 2016. And the final approval is, is this correct? 2018, the final acceptance of?
Yes, and that's the part of the reason why they showed that these things take a long time. That was, that we, when the developer built out the public improvements owned by the city, it took that long after certificate of occupancy for them to get it correct.
For them to get it correct. So, but the point of all it is, is that the upfront part where, you know, where all the heavy, the important, you know, the decisions are made by all of you is relatively rapid. And by their nature of these projects, it just takes time for final parts to all be put together for, before a final certificate of occupancy. And then the final slide is, I know that you're looking at design standards and, you want to go through this? Just go through it? Sure, we're looking at. Yeah, go ahead.
So, Dick just summarized two projects nearby here that I think all of us would agree are very high quality and add truly add to the overall fabric of the city of Troy. Generally speaking, the quality of the projects, the quality of the applications that we're seeing is very high, but not always. And as Dick summarized, the Planning Commission sees a lot of site plans. So, the Planning Commission as a body feels that it's time to maybe raise the bar a little bit on the overall quality of the applications that we're seeing. And how do you do that? You do that through strengthening your design standards. So, this item was added to the agenda at the request of the Planning Department to really formally advise city council that this is a priority of the, of the Planning Commission. And you'll be seeing some, when you read the minutes that are included in the agendas, you're going to see some, some action and some meetings that are being held by the, by the Planning Commission to discuss design standards. The staff has been working on some, some draft language. We had a meeting in the fall to discuss conceptually some, some issues related to this overall design standards. And we're ready to present some draft language at the first meeting in March. I actually shared our first cut of language with Julie, who I see is whispering to Lori that I'm going to get that to you tomorrow. It's a little more surprising the city of Troy with any language yet. So, we're trying to, to take the right steps here. So, some of the, just to summarize some of the things you'll see in the language, we're going to formally require, we're proposing to formally require architectural seals for architectural drawings. We're going to formally require three-dimensional color renderings to really help paint a picture. We ask for those now, but they're not formally included in our master, in our zoning ordinance. And we're going to strengthen the site plan review standards by adding specific design standard language. So, these are some things you can, you could expect to see. I know all the, all the city council reads, reads the minutes that are included and you're going to see that coming. So, in terms of process, we'll present some draft language to the Planning Commission in March. We can anticipate, Ben, I worked on it, so obviously the language is pretty much perfect. I joke. But we're looking at a, potentially a Planning Commission public hearing in April or May. And then within the next couple of months after that, a public hearing for proposed tax amendments in front of the city council. If you have any questions about design standards, it's on the agenda. Ben and I and Mark, Brian, we can, we can all talk about it if you want. And with that, I'd like to kick it back to Mayor Slater. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I think that was a great presentation. It's always nice to get reeducated in some areas that we forget about. I know there's a lot of public questions. I know a couple that I have and maybe if I could just, just to start the conversation. One of the topics that I've had with some Planning Commission members, and I was hoping maybe we could get Mr. Carlisle or Brett to discuss this about what by, what do we mean by, by right? And it seems that we're wasting a lot of time in the Planning Commission when things are, are by right. And they listen to residents and they listen to people come and speak and opposition when there's really nothing that can be done if it's by right. If you could just maybe talk about what by right is and does it really need to go through the Planning Commission process or would it be better suited at an administrative level?
Well, it could be. You know, there, there are communities that, especially in areas where we have form-based code, you know, many, many communities have made a, the approval of uses because it is so prescriptive to be approved administratively. Obviously, when we wrote form-based codes for you, we did not recommend that. We kept the Planning Commission as part of the process. But essentially, there are, you know, two uses, two classifications and uses of, well, three actually in every zoning district. There are uses that are permitted as of right. Those are uses that, it doesn't matter what you do, that are uses permitted. So, if it says it's permitted as of right, it's that column, that use is going to be So if it says it's permitted as of right, it's that column, that use is going to be permitted in that district. There are special land uses. The special land uses are those uses which may or may not be permitted based on the base of a case-by-case evaluation and based against the standards of the ordinance for special land uses. So these are uses that under certain circumstances may be just fine, okay? And may meet your standards for special approval. Other, under certain, other circumstances, for compatibility reasons, for natural conditions, for traffic reasons, may not fit in that particular circumstances. That's why that's a discretionary decision, and that's why we treat those as special land uses. And then, of course, we have accessory uses, which are generally pretty much, you know, those are uses that are incidental to either a principal or permitted use or an accessory use. Can you answer the question, Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, very, very well. I would just like to maybe hear from some planning commission members, their feelings on that, because I know they've discussed it with me and they feel that they get beat up by, by residents and, and on topics and situations that they really have no control over, and they don't, they don't have discretion. And I see Ms. Cruz is...
I think Karen has a question, I'm not sure.
Oh, Karen has all kinds of things to say.
Yeah. Karen.
So I have talked to Dane about this particular challenge, if you will, with the by right. As a planning commissioner, we're very interested in what the residents of the city have to say. We are always looking for ways to improve the city while at the same time kind of striking that balance between where we want to take the city, where, what direction we see the city going in, and how we want the city to grow and look, because, you know, we're the city of tomorrow today. And, and also keep in mind what it is that, like I said, the residents want. When it comes to these by right situations where we have people, we have people coming to speak, and they want to be heard, and they stand up there at that microphone, and they write their notes, and they're very emotional, and then, you know, at the end of their plea and their neighbor's plea, and we have our meeting, and we approve the project, they look at us and they're like, what, what just happened? Did you not hear a word that I said? So, you know, trying to get people who don't do planning to understand what it means by right versus we have discretion to be able to say yes or no, is in and of itself a challenge. And so we have to strike that balance between, does it make sense then to let it be an administrative function, right? Because it's by right, we don't really have discretion, it's a use that's permitted. Maybe the planning department takes care of it, and then people don't get a say? Or are we, we losing an opportunity to hear what it is that our, our residents want us to hear? I mean, I think on the one hand, you walk away with people feeling very distrustful about their government, feel like their government is disconnected from what they want as a resident and a taxpayer because they've not been heard and they've not been listened to. And that doesn't help any of us. That doesn't help city council that needs to get re-elected. It doesn't help the city hall, employees who deal with these people every day, it doesn't help us. But it does give us an opportunity to hear generally sort of what the feel is out there with the residents. So, you know, I don't have the easy answer. I would like to say that, you know, that part of the statute that allows us to have discretion for public health, welfare, and safety is enough in a by-right situation for us to be able to say no, because it's not what the people want. But I'm not so sure that it is.
I know. I, I share that concern. And city council to some degree sees a little bit of that too, when, when it does get to us, you know, things are by right. And, you know, I think there is a balance between whether, you know, you take the voice away from the people then, you know, if you do it administratively. And I'm sure that's the reasoning that goes into that. Mr. Hudson?
Maybe a little more practical. I'm Karen, a little more esoteric in her comments regarding the ordinance. But where we get the frustration, I think, is when someone comes in with a development plan for houses. And there's been a vacant field with trees and shrubs in there for everybody, except now the developer wants to put homes there. And they get totally upset because he's doing it with his property. Maybe what the planning commission ought to think about doing is when we get these projects that come in and they meet all of the zoning requirements, by right, they're entitled to do that project. Maybe we've got to educate our audience, saying before the whole thing starts, now look, this project meets all the ordinance's requirements. We have no discretion to reject it. If we reject it, then we're going to have our city attorney with one more case on their desk defending the city. And I, I think that they've got to understand too, that when we see by right, we can't dictate to a developer his use of his property if it's a lawful property. You know, I think that one of our developers pushed us to the limit when he clear-cut the whole forest, and we came up and the city council approved a tree preservation ordinance. But maybe we've got to educate our audience that as much as we'd like to, we can't. We're bound by the, the ordinance. Now, we've got a conditional use, okay, discretion can come in at any point, and we can move them around a little bit, but not much, because if they don't want to change it, and we don't like it, we just don't approve the conditional zoning.
I think just to follow up to Mr. Hudson's comment, the typical projects that we've seen lately, especially since we passed the cluster ordinance, is where a developer comes in and wants to put a, put a development, let's say 20, 25 homes. And we are confronted with residents who don't want that, in the first place, they don't want that parcel developed at all. But then the developer comes in and he said he wants to put in a cluster development, which is actually a little bit more dense because of certain benefits, certain criteria he means. And we have to actually go through the process of explaining to the residents and the neighbors that this developer can actually put in these homes without that cluster approval by right. And they're upset that we, we actually have the opportunity to approve a project just by right. They don't, they don't understand that development, the developer can actually do that even if we don't approve the cluster development. And then we increase the density, and that confuses them even more. What, and they're, the, the residents are actually going back and forth between staying, would we rather have this traditional development with five fewer homes, or would we rather have this higher-density development that preserves more buffer and more green space? So even the, the residents have this confusion when they approach a project and when they come to our meetings. And this whole issue of by right, we're confronted more frequently now because of this whole cluster development.
Another one of the by-right situations comes into play when a development comes in next to an existing subdivision or existing home area, and they connect the streets. The streets become a real point of contention, because now, all of a sudden, now I've got more traffic. Is this going to be safe? Are my kids going to get run over? We've had arguments from the public saying, well, my kids always play hockey in the street. Now they can't. Well, okay, the streets are meant for cars, they're not meant for playing hockey. But the point is, that's the kind of reaction we get from the public, and that's another point of contention, the streets.
Mr. Taylor?
I'd like to bring up a little different aspect, a number of projects I've seen over the years where a developer will come in, they'll have a plan that's by right, but, but the residents may have some objections. And oftentimes, well, oftentimes, there have been times where we've suggested before acting on this tonight, that the developer and the residents sit down and talk about it, see if they can find some common ground. And there have been a number of occasions where that has taken place. So I think by removing the, the citizen's opportunity to get up and voice their opinion, and I, and I'm not disagreeing with what's been said tonight, because I've listened to that too. My kid's playing the street. Well, I agree with Tom, that streets aren't for kids to play in, but, so there's, there's that, that comes with the territory, in my opinion. But to give the citizens an opportunity to voice their concerns and for the developer to hear the concerns, and there are times where there are things can be done that isn't going to change the development to an extent that, that they're not going to do the project, but it would satisfy the concerns of the citizens, or at least meet somewhere in the middle, so that they understand they've been heard and that people are willing to listen. And, you know, just in the spirit of, you know, being good neighbors, trying to work things out.
We recently had a project come before us, I believe it was a by-right, where a gentleman wanted to put a building at Square Lake and Livernoy, and he had it designed so that it met the ordinance's requirements perfectly. And he put the picture of the building up on the screen for us to see, and we all went ahhh! That it was by right, and it met every single corner of the ordinance. And all we could think of, all we could think of as a planning commission was, oh, you can't build that building. You can't. So at some level, I mean, not only is it hard for the residents of the city to sort of grasp and understand what by right means, but we will also occasionally run into developers who look at us, and even though their project is absolutely subpar on every level, look at us and say, I followed your ordinance. What is it that you expect me to do? I'm within the confines of the law. You need to approve my project. That's problematic.
A little segue with Karen's point, I think is where I'll take it. That's where designing standards could be very important to the planning commission. We can take this brown box that met all every corner of us and say, we've had some fenstrations about John Diggle's house, did I borrow one from you? And decorations and different materials for a building, which can put a nicer facelift. Don't get me that bad yet.
Well, it sounds like it's coming, though. And, you know, if some council members want to, I, I would be very, very reluctant to take away, you know, the right of the people to, to, you know, I, I think I, I know this council well enough, that that's very, very important to them. And I think we, you know, to Mr. Hudson's point, you know, something upfront, maybe from, from the attorney, that's always there, explaining what by right is, I think that would go a long way to setting a tone. And as Mr. Tagle said, I think it's, I've heard, I've watched your meetings all the time, and I, I see that quite often, where you, you almost force the developer to meet with the citizens. Almost every project, I think, and that's the way to it. In fact, Mr. Admins first.
Well, as planning commissioners, and it was mentioned in the opening segment, that many of us are certified citizen planners, those classes really stress strongly the need for public input. And I think to go to strictly administrative approval would be a step in the wrong direction. You know, we think people have lost faith in government now. I think that would elude even more of them.
I was going to say, we do. I mean, those two that were presented by Mr. Carlisle, they only went in front of planning commission once, but there have, or maybe a couple of times actually, I think, the Stonecrest. But there are times when we find ways to take the input that we get from Mr. Savinat and Mr. Ben Carlisle, our consultant, and send it back, because we're not always happy. But, and we try to get a better development, you know, from the developer. Sometimes our hands are tied, and it's a challenge.
Well, it sounds to me like design standards is, is needed rather quickly. Should help.
Dave, is there some kind of best practices for how communities communicate that to their residents and make them understand how the process is a little better? And is there anything you can learn from other communities, or are we already the leaders on that? And that's good. I would love to explore that. Maybe in, when we send out, you know, a mailer to the nearby residents, what does it say? Does it try to explain the process? It doesn't even happen? I'm still learning how it works.
We don't send out a mailer on by right?
I'm not, I'm learning it. Okay.
I think Mr. Carlisle, who probably represents many, many communities, probably, probably could speak to that.
Sure.
I would assume that you recommend that to the city of Troy, because you feel that's the best, the best practice.
And, you know, I think, I mean, we do every opportunity to, to provide as much information and education as to residents and citizens as possible. The, the difficulty is, for the most part, is when you have that opportunity for interaction, it's when it's in their backyard. And generally, that's not the greatest time in the world to try to have that kind of dialogue from that standpoint. I do think that, I, I will tell you, it's been my experience that many, not all, most developers want to be a good neighbor. And allowing for that communication between the developer and the properties that they are going to be neighboring, neighboring is really good. In fact, we encourage, we encourage them to go out and speak to the neighbors, even in advance of a matter of coming before the commission, just to make sure, as I talked about, the points of friction, those will be the points of friction. I think you can always do more. I know that, that, that happens in the planning commission meetings, I think you can always do more. The question is, is will people actually benefit from things on your website and educational things? You know, they will, if they'll, if they'll take the, take the opportunity to read it. But generally, unfortunately, people generally won't do it unless there's an issue that's of immediate concern to them. So, and you have a very, I mean, you've got a complex community. I mean, you know, you're, you're 80,000 people, you know, very, very things. And so every situation's going to be different, so it's often difficult to sort of know in all cases what, where, where there's going to be a problem, a problem area.
Just a question. I think, and maybe it's from Mr. Hudson, were we talking about educating the people that come to make comments at the planning commission meeting?
I think it would be, in essence, by a chairman saying like, this is a project which apparently meets all the ordinance's requirements, it's here for the review, we have no discretion in rejecting this project if it meets all the requirements, it's by right.
And that's one instance, right? It could be a different use, and we would talk about. My point is, I think that's more impactful than putting it on, on the website or something like that, so that the people know what we're deliberating on, right?
Good, good.
Yeah, some developers obviously have different levels of communication with the, with the public than others, and we see, we've seen that many times, where some are very good neighbors and some are obviously adversarial. So we'd have to kind of tweak that to see how it would work. But what, that cluster development that just came before us, that was, that was an instance to where he maybe didn't communicate very well, but once the residents came to planning commission and came to us, and they were heard, and we explained to them about the cluster development and how everything worked, we talked to them after the meeting, and they were not, maybe not receptive, but, but they were more understanding towards a project.
Pardon?
I was going to say, the doing it the day of the meeting, trying to explain to them, is a little challenging, because usually they're at the meeting because there are already heightened emotions.
Yeah.
And so I would hesitate to say that that's the best way or the only way.
And I would agree. I don't think that's the only way, but I think we need to do it at the meeting just so they know what the vote and deliberation is about. But I agree with you, that shouldn't be the only communication.
Good.
Thanks, Dan. I agree, this, it's probably not the only time to, to educate, but I think it's really important. It's not just for the people that are sitting in rooms that are looking to, to make public comment and share their thoughts. I think it's also important for those that watch the planning commission meeting later on, that maybe we'll send an email later. It sets the stage, it puts it in context. You know, if planning commission is looking at two different items, the first item is a by right, you know, having that, I'll say somewhat standard statement of, this is, here's why we're reviewing it, this is the level of discretion, and what the outcome of this could be, versus something that's a conditional rezoning, where they're talking about it because this is the amount of discretion, so that people understand whether they're in the room or watching it later on, what the expectation is. I, I think that's critical. I do think there might be other opportunities, whether it's putting something on our website, but I, I strongly feel there needs to be something fairly standard for each of the different, I'll say, uses, whether it's discretionary or by right, PUD, et cetera.
Alli?
Just to actually, maybe like, let me see, what Karen said. One of the, one of the concerns that comes up is this by right, and a lot of times in meetings, when, we, we have meetings where our residents...
meetings where residents are very contentious, and sometimes projects that are very contentious. And usually, what we try to do is to be very intentional when the project is contentious, to actually bring that up early on before a presentation is, and actually have the assistant city attorney just briefly give a summary of what by right really means, and to just a quick, one or two-minute education of whoever's in audience to understand that's goal for the project and that, how it relates to by right. So, sometimes it varies project to project, but I think probably moving forward, it would be, it would be wise to actually implement that as a template for every single project upfront to just form, even an audience that's online. And maybe that would be good information to have upfront.
Yeah, I think it, it made me an excellent point. If you watch, if you watch it the next week, you really don't know what happened. Then you just see residents being angry, and then you see a planning commission say, "So what?" You know, kind of, it's not a...
One of the things I think that makes it even more complicated in these days of social media, although I'm not a user of it, but there is so much disinformation on those sites. My wife was telling me today that we don't have terminals for council members and the mayor and everything. That's what, that's what you're facing out there. And I don't know how you answer those stuff that they got, you know.
Could I give Brent an opportunity?
Sure.
So, to answer Councilman Hamilton's question a few minutes ago, I believe that we're a leader in best management practices in terms of how we deal with various processes, including informing residents. However, there's always room for improvement, and I'm listening. And I've spoken to some planning commissioners about this, about this issue. And Mr. Evans, I think social media is a challenge, but I think it's also an opportunity. It's an opportunity to get ahead of the game through various platforms such as, such as Twitter and Facebook. And it's an opportunity to inform, I'm thinking of the mailers that we sent out that someone mentioned. We could perhaps improve the level of information that we have on our websites for the various processes, and perhaps attach a link to the mailer so that residents can get ahead of the game, go online, and research these issues. Also, maybe have handouts. And I think we can always do a better job, Ben and I, in our presentations of kind of setting the table in terms of what the process we're dealing with, what the expectations are in cooperation with the city attorney. So, I'm listening. This is all really good feedback. I'm hearing a lot of things, I think, that will improve the overall quality of our presentation and our efforts to inform and engage with the public. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, we oftentimes will get emails sent in from the residents in opposition. Most of them are in opposition to a project. Is there an opportunity to have a standard response email come from the city saying, "Thank you very much for your comments. If this project is a project by right," just a short sentence or two back to them. So, it's almost kind of pre-prepping them that, you know, this is, this is what this project is. I don't know. That may be an opportunity. I don't know. I don't know if it would be a huge additional workload to, you know, hit reply with a kind of a standard response, but something to consider. Yeah. Brent's writing down. Ellen? Okay. Our student.
I want to go first. Sorry. You know what? I want to go first because she's probably going to sound a whole lot smarter.
So, yeah, I haven't yet to follow her. I've seen her. I just wanted to say, you know, when we did do that, approve on that last cluster, yeah, Mr. Savin did a nice job of setting it up that night. And what becomes repetitious to us and is information that's all we had, I think, you know, communication is recognizing who's in front of us. This might be the very first time they've ever come in front of a planning commission. They don't even know where the meeting is. They don't, they're not even aware maybe that it's televised. So, you know, I think looking at it as the opportunity, it's the fun of this work, right? Yes, it can be frustrating if they're coming in with pitchforks and torches, but the fun of the whole process is the process of dialogue. And when we frame on thinking that, when I think, I think our residents feel that when, when they're in the room with us. I know they do, and that, you know, as Councilman Pennington said, they might not have been thrilled about the project, but they understood the process. They understood what the cluster, the density was, and why, why we would have supported that was, was pretty well laid out. So, I guess I'm kind of just reiterating, but it is an opportunity. I think redundant information is valuable. A handout at the meeting, links on a website that you could put in a quick email with already, you know, the language being the right language so that we don't misstep, maybe a little video on the website. When we talk about it at the meeting, not a throwaway at the beginning, but it's a chart that goes up that, you know, we stop and guess, for all of us, we could probably repeat it word for word, but it goes through and then sets that stage. And then we get the healthy dialogue. And because of that dialogue, I think you as a planning commission, because you have done that so well with residents, have really proactively done some wonderful things for this city and really had city councils back on a number of items, you know, like these design standards that you're talking about. And I think that's just a valuable, that involvement, as much as we can dialogue, on a really constructive way, you can see residents kind of act off and then understand, and they might not like it, but they at least understand, and that's, that's worthwhile.
Claire, maybe you could just sum this up for us, this topic.
It's interesting, because a lot of times in contentious projects, after the whole meeting is over, people like to come to me and complain. I'm not sure why. Maybe, maybe they want to make sure I'm not being a slut. I'm not sure. But a lot of people come to me afterwards, they talk. And a lot of these contentious projects, people who've come have been by teachers, neighbors, parents I know. So, they talk to me afterwards too, in like school or at different activities. And I think the main complaint that I hear from them is they feel like they're not being heard. And what I've found that, from observation, that seems to be useful, and from what they've told me in, after the meeting or sometimes at school, is when they see that, after they come up and give their statements, and a council member or a planning commissioner seems to repeat their statements, because it makes them know that what they said was heard. Because I think Ms. Cruz mentioned it earlier, sometimes someone comes up with all their notes, they talk, and then after everybody talks, it seems like commissioners didn't hear a word they said, and then just goes ahead and proves it. And then in meetings where commissioners seem to take their statement and ask the development, like developers, "Did you know about this? Did you hear what this resident said and repeat it, filter it to the developer?" Or to just even repeat that seems to make the audience a lot more, even if they don't like a project, they feel like they're being heard. So, they're a lot more acceptable about it in the end. I've had a teacher who was at one of these contentious meetings, who was a neighbor at McClure, who told me that having his statement repeated made him feel a lot less upset about the project being passed. So, just being heard, I think, would be a great help.
Ellen was right. It's way better.
Yeah, yeah, Karen's hand went up. So, what I'm hearing tonight, and I don't have disagreement with, is even when it comes to by right projects, where we know that we have very little discretion in making a decision about the project, we still want people to come. We still want them to be heard. We still want them to have the opportunity to speak their piece, if you will. And I think that that's helpful because it gives us as planning commissioners a pulse, if you will, as to what's, even though we're not elected officials, it gives us a pulse as to what's sort of going on in the community and what's being heard. However, I want to talk just for a second, as a planning commissioner, to my city council about those projects where we do have discretion, and we have a public hearing, and people are coming in, and they're very disgruntled, and they have their torches and their pitchforks, and they don't want the project. And yet, in our minds, as people who've gone through the master citizen planner course, and people who do this every day, we're thinking, "This is a great project. This is exactly what the city needs. This is what we want. This is how we move forward. This is, you know, the direction that we want to take." And then we have to be leaders, right? We can't just be panders. We have to be leaders. And we need support from city council when it comes to that, right? I mean, because you're going to hear, if it's a public hearing, it's coming to you. And you're going to hear it, right? And you are, you are in a position where you're balancing what your constituents who've elected you want versus your job as a leader in the community and making sure that Troy stays the best community in the state of Michigan and continues to move forward and grow in positive ways. So, you have to be leaders, even when everyone in the room is against it. I think we all recognize that the Civic Center development is a case in point, where it could potentially have great benefits to this city. But for whatever reason, there's a whole lot of people out there, and they're the same ones over and over again, who don't want to see it happen. You're going to be faced with a choice, right? You're either going to maintain the status quo, or you're going to be a leader. You're going to make the hard decision. And I think that it's important to be able to do that. I think it's important to be able to recognize when it's necessary. And I think it's important to have the chutzpah to get it done, to continue to move this city forward. That's all I have to say about it.
David, actually, I'm glad you brought that up because that was, I've been waiting six months to have a conversation with a lot of your people about projects. And you guys do a great job, and I applaud every meeting that you have and every project you approve or don't approve, as the case may be. But, you know, we, there is a big disconnect when you have the planning commission unanimously approve something, and then the city council is split or against it. And to me, you know, I mean, developers spend a lot of money to go through the process. And for them to go through that process upfront and spend all this money and time and energy into making the best project and jumping through the hoops that we make them jump through to put these projects together, only to be told, "No, we don't want to hear," is just, it's a travesty. I mean, it really shouldn't, shouldn't happen. So, you know, my, my concern is, you know, is the process appropriate? Should they come to council first? Should they come to the planning commission first? How is this discretionary situation best served to try to keep a guy from spending half a million dollars to only be told no by one body and yes by another body? So, that's my biggest concern. And, you know, arguably, we did the right or wrong thing out of McClure. You know, I don't know, I don't know where we were at with that, but we do have to be leaders. I agree with that. Sometimes you have to tell people, you know, bad news, that, you know, we were approving a project and you don't like it, but, you know, we're the people that were elected to make those decisions. Sometimes those decisions are much easier than others, and sometimes we have to deliver bad news. As was the case with the, the one that we talked to the folks after in Silver Glen, you know, that a lot of them weren't happy, but again, at the end of the night, they understood. We were adults. We talked through it. You know, we ended up with a good result. So, that's really my biggest concern in the whole matter. Again, I think both bodies do a wonderful job, but how do we keep a developer from spending a bunch of money and then not being able to put a project together?
Thank you, Karen, for shifting the conversation to this topic. I think that was six months ago, what kind of started all this. I will say, and I, I agree with your passion, and I agree with your sentiment on a lot of these things, but one man's pander is another man's representative. And so, I, you know, and you can be a leader and representative both in the same. I get that and understand that. I think that while certain projects do look fantastic to, on paper and through everything, and they've jumped through hoops and they've spent a lot of money, it, these decisions don't happen in a vacuum. I think something talked, there was a vacuum on one of the slides. There are people in the city that should have a say and do have a say. And we can argue about if it's the same people over and over again and the tactics they use. And I get all of those arguments, but we, these decisions will have ramifications on everybody's lives in this city. And so, yes, we need, our task with moving the city forward in a responsible way that represents all the people of the community. And a lot of people in the community are ready to move as fast forward as some of us may be with our development ideas. And so, we have to be on council mindful of that because we do represent them. But to Dave's point and your point, there is something wrong with the process, or there at least has been this last year, it feels, because we are at least being told that, you know, people have spent a lot of money, a lot of time and resources just to be kind of shut and have the door slammed in their face one night in front of us on council. And I don't know if that can be solved in any way, you know, by ordinance or by a process change. It doesn't make sense to have them come to council first because we don't, we can't work out all the details. So, it's kind of a strange situation. But, you know, we, council approves most of the things planning commissioner recommends for approval. I mean, if you look statistically, I think we do, other than two big ones last year, you know, we, so I'm not sure it's much, as much of a problem as we think it is. It's just there's a light shown on it because it's such, there's been too high-profile issues. We need to keep talking and moving forward to figure it out. But, you know, at the end of the day, we do, are responsible to the citizens that elected us. And you guys were pointed, so it's a different, it's a different thing. I mean, and I, I don't know how we find that balance, but we need to find one. And, you know, we can't all have the same like minds because that doesn't work either. So, there has to be a difference in opinion. But we have to keep talking about it.
Yeah, I wanted to just kind of echo what Karen has said about making decisions. When we make decisions, we aren't in a vacuum, but looking at the master plan. And so, maybe our next study session should be all of us together walk through the master plan. Because I think that's what we have used at planning commission. We all don't agree at, at planning commission. If you watch our meetings, you will know that we are not in agreement. We end up voting in agreement on many occasions because we are able to see common ground. And I think that's what we want to see between planning commission and city council. The other thing I was going to suggest is, when I first joined the meeting, when I was first made the, the person that got to have one more meeting within that month, and become the planning commission representative to the DVA, I just wonder, why do we read this long sheet of instructions that Mr. Eisenbach, or as vice chairman, reads every single time? The second time I realized, it's a different set of people. Ellen, yeah, that's who we're reading it for. So, maybe we come up with a document like that that we read at planning commission when we have projects. And maybe we can benchmark what other cities are doing to see if they're also reading. That might be a good benchmark, like David said, to that David said, to, to see us do that at planning commission. But I think an educational component of our master plan is really, really important for us as well as the general public. Because I think that's something that, when I went to the university's implemented class, that was the thing that I realized, like, they asked us to raise our hands, how many of us of the 40 people that were in the classroom together having a master plan? It was less than half. Because there's a lot of rural communities that don't have, and municipalities across the state that don't have a master plan. We are very fortunate that we put the time and effort and get citizens into our master plan.
Just to follow up to what Bodman said, some of the most contentious projects that we had, especially last year, were at the friction point locations, similar to what Mr. Paul said, commercial, residential. And the, the project that is kind of on the table right now that we really went through last year, it was McClure. And the planning commission, we, when we looked at this project, we really dissected it in so many different ways. And the one topic that kept on coming to the surface was this whole idea of transition. You know, we discussed transition. What, what is transition? What should it, what should it look like? And I think we went around so many times discussing this. And in the end, you know, that was one of the main topics of trying to understand what, how are we transitioning in that specific neighborhood from, from Big Beaver down to the residential neighborhood? And I think maybe that should be one of the conversations. We should dive in a little bit deeper as, as both bodies together to really understand what transition should look like for our city, especially down Big Beaver. Because I don't think this project is the last of what we're going to see. And we're going to have to come up against this transition again sometime in the future with whatever project might come down, down the pipe. with whatever project might come down the pipe. And so, I think that's one of the really specific key issues that we as two bodies need to come together and be on the same page of understanding, really, the master plan. But not just the master plan, but this whole gray area of, you know, what's a vision of our city long-term and this whole idea of transition in Big Beaver.
Great point. Go.
Just another specific point I was going to make. My recollection also, I agree with Thomas' point about the master plan because I guided the way I looked at that project as well. And as I recall, there was some inconsistency with the master plan and the actual zoning of the adjacent property. So there was some, well, inconsistency is the best way to put it. So I guess in addition to transition, if there are areas like that where the master plan has a certain suggested use, but the adjacent properties aren't zoned specific to that use, do we need to reconcile those two things?
Thank you, Karen, for your eloquent statement. And I do support that. One of the prime responsibilities of the planning commission is to promote economic development. There's nothing wrong with government generating revenue, folks. And I think we've got to educate the voters and residents that that's, they benefit from that. Their tax rate is dependent upon promoting economic development. We all know that the split between residential and commercial has gone the way we don't want it to go. And the other point I want to raise is that as part of this promoting economic development, we don't choose where a developer wants to put his money. That's his decision. And so, I think to say to a developer at the last vote on the issue, "Oh, it's a beautiful plan. I just wish it were somewhere else," really kind of insults the developer. Thank you.
I've debriefed this in my mind. And I can, first of all, I want to say, when I make these decisions, I am looking to the master plan. I watch the planning commission meetings that precede them, especially if it's a big decision like that. And I do have the master plan. I do take it in oath. And I take my leadership on this very, very seriously. And I think all of council does. This was, I know, planning was frustrated when we voted, when there was a majority that voted down McClure. That was not capricious. The zoning ordinance to me, you heard my piece on that. I had feedback before and after, you know, Mr. Carlisle was talking about how planning commission gets the citizen input. I think you all had citizen input from the neighborhood, the adjacent. What I was getting was a ton of citizen input from people in other neighborhoods watching that you may not have heard or been getting at the same level. And it was not hysterical. It was not windy. It was constructive. And they were now diving into what the master plan looked like at Big Beaver. Some of these same people support absolutely the Civic Center project. But when they looked at this, that thing that happens at McClure and Alpine is where I think our disconnect is. It's the root cause of the dialogue that we tripped into, regrettably. So I think, looking at our master plan carefully, you said, you know, every five years and along the way, I think we're what, three years in on this master plan?
Not quite, but getting, yeah, close.
But I think we need to, let's be honest with ourselves, you know, look at that. Does that make sense? Just right there, the whole Big Beaver corridor and the planning, I'm with it. I get the leadership. I get the development. I get the economic development. This was a serious trip up that wasn't just tangled in windy. If we were really listening to folks, we could hear that concern. I had the word spot zoning brought to my attention, again, from someone who lived in a completely different neighborhood, who happened to be watching the council meeting that night. And it concerned him that we needed to look at that. So I guess I'd like to suggest that, absolutely, let's dive into the master plan together and keep doing it. And as we do, let's have this honest conversation about just this piece, not talking about throwing away the whole Big Beaver, you know, planning. I think on the whole, our master plan is serving us very, very well. But that was an issue. And, you know, that kind of spot zoning feel, I think I'd like to put on the table that we have an honest conversation about if that works there.
How about David?
Thank you. I'll be brief because similar sentiment to Alan. The planning commission designs a master plan and council does not. If I, what I wrote was correct. So if the council and planning commission are at a different place, and the council represents the people, the master plan is what needs to change to more align with what the council and the people want. That's my take.
But, yeah.
But the city council approved the master plan.
That's what I said.
No, they do. They endorsed it.
Yeah.
And they had public hearing on it too, so.
Okay.
And that's why I'm trying to be careful to say, I think, you know, I'm not talking about throwing away the master plan. I'm talking about just, okay, we tripped on this. Why? Let's root cause it. Let's be honest with, you know, and maybe revisit. I could be off. I'm just saying.
Well, this will not be the most contentious thing on Big Beaver. I mean, we're going to revisit this with other projects like Ali was saying. This is not the last.
I don't know about, I think because of how this dives in and that exits and entryways aren't onto Big Beaver, they're way far in. And because Satchin Way went in, I think this has made this different on Big Beaver. And when, I'm just suggesting it's worth a dialogue. It's worth a dialogue.
I don't know that we need to just talk about where.
Thank you. With depending litigation, thank you.
Let's be, you know, let's talk about, and if I could, Mr. Carlisle was.
I just want to make an observation that this is the reason why we recommend that the master plan goes to the city council, to get this concurrence in terms of policy so that you are as much on the same page as possible. Okay? But Chairman Abidian made a very clear point that it's going to be, and I, you know, this is why we said that, it's going to be these points of friction. You know, you know where those are. And there's no reason, first of all, you don't have to wait five years to update a master plan. And second of all, you can always look at it in parts. You know, we modeled, we didn't, but your consultant who did the Big Beaver corridor study did model transition and intensity on the Big Beaver corridor study. I mean, there's representative models in that plan. I think that probably it needs to be reviewed and updated. Because I think the thinking, the concern, the circumstances behind when that was done versus now are two different things. We've had a lot of change since then. And so consequently, there is no reason why that can't be reconsidered. And that, you know, and actually, you know, we could actually model, you know, physically model transition areas, knowing where we know we're going to have points of conflict. Because that concept was there in the Big Beaver study. The concept of transition was there. It just may have been generalized or larger in certain circumstances than what might be the current thinking. Because particularly in that area, you know, that was kind of viewed to be, you know, different now. You know, it was already viewed to be transitional much further back into that neighborhood area in the Big Beaver corridor plan. But, you know, I think you can reasonably study this as a group, both of you, you know, together, and actually come to some real, you know, realization of where you know your points of friction are going to be. And we can actually model how you transition between the intensity that you want on Big Beaver and how it feathers back down to the neighborhoods.
Yeah. If I could just piggyback on that, and if you want to go first. Because that's kind of what I, where I wanted to go, which is where Ali went and Mr. Carlisle was. You know, you have the master plan, but you also have the Big Beaver corridor. And the Big Beaver corridor, to me, is just as important or changing. Okay? You know, we have a corridor, and I voted for Amber, not thinking that it would take three years. But the reason that I changed my mind on Amber was because of the corridor. The corridor went there and it continues along there. And I think that's what we need to pay attention to as well as what the master is along there. Because the corridor goes all the way to Somerset. And that's what we visioned. And that's what I visioned. And that's why I changed my mind with Amber because I voted originally not to approve that PUD. But when I started thinking about corridor, and I've tried to be consistent with that. And I think that's what we were asked to do as an entire body here, is try to be consistent. Okay? Not vote one time for this and then not with the exact same project or something very similar, then vote differently. And as I indicated before, this transition issue, to me, it's A, B, and C for me. Okay? A is right next to Big Beaver. B is the next one behind it, and then C behind it. Could be residential, could be C, or it could be business. But to me, it's supposed to transition from A, B, C. And you can't always do A first. Okay? You know, it's, in a perfect world, you do A, B, and C. But sometimes you have to do C first. Sometimes you got to do B first. But if you believe in transition, if you believe in A, B, and C, you have to believe that sometimes B comes before A. And I think we've lost sight of that a little bit. And I think we do need to come back together and talk about this and get a firm plan of what we believe the corridor is and what transition really means. And just stick to it and be consistent. So I can go a little bit. Or, I'm sorry.
I'll start it anyway. I appreciate the conversation on transition. And we keep with our net Big Beaver and corridor. I wanted to bring focus to Rochester Road. That's in sore need, I'll say, some TLC. And we hear about it from the residents. I'm sure planning commission hears about it. We get plenty of emails. There's been a lot of unhappiness in that corridor. I think that's actually more critical in understanding what we can do transition-wise because it is a very challenging area. You've got an older part of the city in some places, and the lots are uniquely sized. And the transition becomes a challenge. But that's where the transition becomes most important. I would really like to see some focus shift more towards that. If, you know, Mr. Carlisle mentioned that you can look at the master plan in parts. Maybe one of the things that we need to do is look at Rochester Road section and make sure it's meeting the needs of our residents and our businesses. Because right now, I don't think it is despite best efforts. Or at least, you know, on the surface, it seems that way based off the feedback we've gotten. So I'm hoping maybe that's something that we can tackle in the near term, whenever it's most appropriate. Couple other items. I appreciate the comments about being on the same page, alignment of planning commission and council. But, you know, to a certain extent, and we certainly heard this last year, whether it was during some of the charter amendment discussions or during McClure or easy storage, there's mistrust of government. And we heard it here at the table tonight. I want to be very careful that when we say we get on the same page or be on the same page, you know, the way that I contextualize it is, we all have the same understanding, but we may still come at it from different points. We may not agree ultimately in our votes. Because there is a perception, you know, Don, like you said, social media is a wonderful and terrible thing at the same time. But there is opportunity. But you'll hear things like, oh, council's just a rubber stamping body for planning commission. And I never want that to be the perception. It can't be the perception. It shouldn't be. You know, Alan had mentioned, I think all of us at the council table, we look at the criteria, whatever comes in front of us, takes it seriously, and makes our decision based off of our best assessment. And certainly, I voted in ways that have very much angered residents, and I voted in ways that very much angered developers. So I guess I'm fifty-fifty there. But I honestly think all seven of us at the table vote in such a way that both our minds, our hearts, and our focus, both on residents and business, are there. And it's not on, you know, are we going to get reelected? That's, I can guarantee this, not even on the table when I make any vote, whether it's on the development or not. So I just want to be very careful because that is a very, very sensitive topic. The other item I wanted to comment on, and Don, you had mentioned, you know, there's nothing wrong with economic development. Totally agree with you. We love a large tax base. And I would love even more if we could shift, excuse me, you know, the tax for residents and businesses to shift more towards businesses like it was 10, 15 years ago. But again, we got to be very mindful of the community that we're in, what people like and don't like. There's a reason we didn't vote in the pawn shop ordinance. There's a reason why we put a limitation on hoop bars. There's a reason why we've chosen to develop the way that we've developed. So, Don, right there with you, like, development can be a very good thing, but not all development can be a very good thing. So, and I think everyone here at the table gets it. But for those that are watching this meeting, I want you to be assured that that is on our minds. And it's not, we're not greenlighting every project. We're being very discerning on what we move forward with and what we don't.
Just briefly, because I stole some of my thunder. What I wanted, what I just wanted to say was these transition friction areas are not just limited to Big Beaver. And we need to be mindful of, you know, along Rochester and some of the other areas in the city where, you know, it's a little problematic. Yes, that's all I had to say.
Just piggyback on this comment. So just a reminder to the planning commission and city council that our most recent round of amendments to the master plan, we actually looked at four different areas. One of them was Rochester Road. So one of the reasons we did look at Rochester Road was because of some of the criticism that the city received related to the mini storage facility located on Rochester Road, which is a very shallow property with a transition issue. So you'll be seeing, the planning commission will be seeing draft language in March. We've actually prepared it. It's on my desk right now, to address the height issue along Rochester Road. And actually, it's below it from what is permitted today to something significantly less. That, the height was, the height along Rochester Road was increased in 2011 as a way of incentivizing redevelopment. And in hindsight, perhaps we were maybe a little bit aggressive in terms of the height that was permitted there. We had a chance to study Rochester Road, to study some of the challenges, and I can certainly share that with everybody. But recognizing that perhaps a four-story building isn't necessarily the best neighborhood in all instances. But we have, we have looked at that district.
Just bringing back to Big Beaver just quickly, I think one of the components and one of the pieces of the puzzle of the conversation that we have many times, and I think also the council has, is just looking at the vision and the master plan overall, what we're looking for in terms of how we want Big Beaver to develop. And I think the piece of the puzzle that always comes to the discussion is the pedestrian element, the walkability. Where the vision is, we want to make Big Beaver more walkable. And I think the, also another component, another part of the conversation should be, you know, how do we reach that goal? How do we, how do we get to that destination where we finally say, okay, Big Beaver has finally reached that walkability that we desire as a city? And the challenges with these developments coming online. And the challenges with these developments coming online. To have walkability, you need to have more density, more density of, more residential density, you need more residents living close in proximity to Big Beaver. And that's a challenge that we had with projects along Big Beaver. We're trying overall to actually take Big Beaver, have it become more walkable, but we're not, we're not having that density. We're not bringing that density with projects we're approving. And that's, you know, those are two dichotomies in the conversation, the bloody heads. They're two different, not two, different extremes polarity-wise, and they're not going to, if we don't increase projects with density, we're not going to get that walkability that we're actually looking for. And I think that we should bring that into conversation, part of the master plan conversation.
Talking about, I think the critical issue overall that brought us with McClure and other situations is transition. And I think we really have to focus on that. One thing I'll just bring up, I know Brent talked about Rochester, the depth of the commercial lots are just too shallow for the kind of development that we would like to see there because there's housing so close by. What happened years ago with the Monarch Project, that was on Big Beaver where Satchin Way is now, as part of that PUD, the developer bought two extra lots that would be donated to the city as parkland to create that wonderful barrier, I mean, or transition, I can say, not barrier, transition between a higher density and a very low density. So again, I think we're going to have to focus on transition to solve some of these serious problems.
Yeah, so dovetail with something that Edna said just a little bit ago, you know, if any of us on council have ever made a vote that didn't tick off half the city and make the other half really happy, then we haven't lived long enough. So, and developers as well, you know, we've approved a lot of great projects, and, you know, we've poo-pooed on a few others. So, you know, it comes with the territory, and we have to strap on, you know, our big boy pants sometimes and make those decisions. But I want to circle back on the, on the developers' costs because, you know, I don't want, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, it's one thing to make a developer mad, it's another thing to cost them a half a million bucks. You know, but these guys don't, they don't come by their money easily.
I think that goes to the man.
It goes, they get mad if they lose money. And we have to keep that in mind. We, yes, we want to pay attention to the transition, we want to pay attention to the neighborhoods, you know, that's what the constituents want. But by the same token, you know, if we can safeguard it somehow, you know, whether it be process, and I know it's ridiculous to think that it comes to council first, you know, I don't think that's going to work, but some sort of a hybrid of what we're doing now would be, you know, advantageous to try to eliminate some of that.
I won't talk about McClure. We'll talk later, Don, about my comment. But about transition, if we're talking about transition all over, I, Mayor, when you say the A, B, and C, the different pieces, it may, that makes great sense to me. But what I struggle is, if you build B up, there's no guarantees that A will ever happen. So then we're against what the master plan is showing. So, and, you know, you can't say, and if it's a by right property, someone could come redevelop that two-story property that's in the A parcel, and, well, there goes that, and then that's not going to happen for 30, 40 years again. So I don't know how we find the balance in that transition process to have it make sense. Because when you look at the master plan and you are trying to scale down A, B, and C, that is what the residents want, and that is a major concern when you're looking at these decisions. I won't mention any names of decisions, but for me, that's a big concern, and that was how I looked at the master plan. So I, if we're going to stick to the transition issue, if there's a way to look at other ways to, I see Mr. Carlisle nodding his head back there, if there's a way to incorporate some of that so it can make sense and so I can feel more comfortable saying, okay, well, A is, you know, there's a good chance that A will do this because of this, but otherwise there's no guarantees. And so then we end up with an out of scope, out of balance transition, and I don't think it serves the city well.
We've had a master plan for a lot of years, and we try to do what the master plan says, and sometimes by force, but I think Mr. Carlisle gives some suggestions.
Well, I was just going to say, I, you know, many, a number of years ago, I had the same kind of experience in Royal Oak. Same kind of tension between downtown and the neighboring, and I think you're all familiar with Royal Oak, the neighboring surrounding residential areas. And this had been going on for years. And something that we ultimately arrived at is actually building and stepped down transition regulations so that it was based, more based on distance, so that the ABC could be built into all into one project. And as a matter of fact, it has. So that's, that's a solution. Another, in response to Councilmember Henderson's comment, it might not be a bad idea, especially when you know you have particularly noteworthy projects, that you actually have joint subcommittees. That during the pre-application stage, whatever, you know, at that point in time, you know, I actually do this in some other committees where actually, I mean, I'll have, you know, not, you can't quorum, but you actually permit a couple of planning commissioners and a couple of council persons or decision-making people to actually participate in a subcommittee.
Charter for him is spent.
There you go. Change the charter.
Careful there.
That's been good.
But I think you can maybe do some creative thinking that maybe you could accomplish something.
I know, Lori, she can be really creative or thinking, so. But the thing is, part of the problem with it is sometimes is that when you go through a whole process, the first time the council sees a project is if it's gone through all this, that's a problem. I can see that, you know? Because now, all of a sudden, you're, you're looking at a train that's already left the station from that standpoint, and have either no, little knowledge of it or hardly any input.
I think it's been a great discussion tonight. We were going to try and limit this to an hour and a half, and, you know, we're past that. So anybody has anything that they want to just maybe let's try and just sum this up here pretty quickly. David, did you have a final comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment, yeah. Maybe for that, we could do some kind of, you know, nonofficial approval vote for the early stages of a project or something. Council do something like that, that wouldn't violate the charter?
Why?
Why not, that has no teeth, just to give the developer a sense of where we're at, you know? And this is very, I'm just trying to.
Lori, shake that. I appreciate the creativity, and we certainly understand, you know, where you're coming from. We will think on it. You know, I have one of the brightest and best here to help with that. But I don't know that that's really going to be feasible because council really can't make the decision until everything is put into, and it's all put together. So that, that's, that's going to be the difficulty.
I think we just have to meet again, make sure that the, we're all looking at the Big Beaver corridor, and we're looking at the master plan, and I don't want to get off on a tangent here because I'm going to ask Brian to sum this up, which he always does for us right at the end, but maybe where we're going to go next. But, you know, I sit, I sit on the DDA board, which I think is a very important board in the city. We are thinking about expanding to maybe different areas in the city for other DDA areas. Rochester Road, I think, is maybe a great opportunity. And, you know, what's to say it shouldn't have its own corridor plan too? So, you know, I think those are a lot of good, good things that we can be talking about in the future. I think this is a great meeting. The interaction was the best that I've seen in quite some time. And I think that's a testament that the council hands to the planning commission that's, it was a great meeting. And I'm just going to ask Brian if he could just summarize this.
That's favorite part of the program, layer of the. It's always easy to do with 25, 30 people of San Diego. But I'll start with, if you really want to do A, B, and C together, which is apparently what you want to do, Councilmember Baker, I think everyone want to do, you have to own the land.
I know that.
I'll just leave it at that. I think it'd be a place of the city where you own the land. I think we all want that, right? So I think we need to look at the master plan is one thing that I heard, and, you know, I know there was conversation of diving down in there. I think it's pretty easy for these guys to do because they did do subcategories in the last master plan update, including Big Beaver, including Rochester Road, up in North Troy, guys, and another two places. Anyway, so, oh yeah, Maple Corridor, which is another one that doesn't get a lot of love, but it's got a lot of development if you've ever been around Maple Hoolidge lately. And traffic is an issue. But anyway, transition areas, we need to look at transition areas, and not just one, but a lot, a lot of them. We know where several are. So then reconcile the inconsistencies between the zoning and master plan. I also, I also wrote that down. I guess while we looked at the master plan, that would be something that would be brought up. So that's my hour and a half summary.
And design standards.
Well, I, yes, I just assume that that's going forward, and that's going to happen.
Sure, I'll let her answer. Brian, that. We'll try to meet again, you know, because I think, I think we do all share this idea of coming together with ideas to show consistency and show what we really want in the specific areas. So, great meeting. Once again, thanks to everyone for showing up tonight. I don't see that there's anyone here to speak out of their comments. So thank you again, and we adjourn.